Good evening. Welcome to the Meridian City Council Work Session. Today is Wednesday, November 12th, and it is 4:30 PM. We will begin with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, Councilwoman Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Taylor.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Whitlock.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Thank you. With that, first up, we have adoption of the agenda.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, Councilman Overton.
The agenda is published.
Okay. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as published. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Councilman Overton.
The consent agenda, Madam Vice President, to sign on the clerk two test.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Next up, we have items moved from the consent agenda. There are no such items. We'll move on to department reports. First up, we have the Executive Director Craig Rayborn to provide a presentation from the Community Planning Association. Okay, we'll turn it over to you, Director Rayborn.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Let me back up one here. So, my name's Craig Rayborn. I've been the Executive Director at Compass now for coming up on nine months. So still relatively new, and one of the things that we have been doing, we do every year, we go around and we meet with staff and folks from each of our member agencies so that we get an opportunity to hear what the needs are around the region and then encourage early, do an early encouragement to participate in funding activity that we undertake every year to help support smaller projects around the region. And so we've been doing that, but because I'm new, we're moving up something that we do every few years as well, which is go out and try to meet with all the governing bodies and actually introduce, you know, introduce Compass to elected officials around the region. And in this case, because I'm new, it's an opportunity for you all to get to know me and because I live in Meridian, when I'm walking down the street, which I do a fair amount, you'll be able to like honk and recognize me hopefully and, you know, acknowledge me. And I'll just assume anyone who honks at me for my crazy pedestrian behavior is doing it because you saw me at this meeting, so. With that, I just want to give you guys just a brief introduction of, you know, about where I come from so you get a sense of kind of, you know, like why I'm here and what I do. So I've been doing transportation planning and policy-related work for about 25 years now. I have primarily worked for the past 10 to 12 years in metropolitan planning organizations such as Compass in the west and in the south and primarily in rapidly growing areas. So places that have the kinds of challenges that we encounter in this region. And so I've dealt with pretty much every kind of transportation issue, just in different contexts and different settings over the years, and I'm really familiar with sort of the whole toolbox of solutions and programs and policies and funding sources that are out there to try to address, try to address those issues. So I'll just briefly just remind you or introduce you to, you know, who Compass is. So we're an association of cities and counties and the highway districts and other agencies around the region that plan for the future, that are trying to look beyond just the right now, but look, you know, 20 or more years out and start identifying what the needs are going to be over that long-term period for the region as a whole. But the main thing is that Compass is our members. So everything that I do is directed by our Board of Directors. And so I'll just note, you know, Councilmember Overton is on our, is on our council, Mayor Simison is on our council, and then Meridian, or our Board of Directors, rather. And then Meridian is also represented by Charlie Roundtree, who I think you all are familiar with as well. He's very active and has been really helpful for me as I've been getting settled in as well, so I really appreciate that. We also have RTAC members, Caleb Hood. RTAC, sorry, is our regi-, I used to have to pay a dollar to my boss every time I threw out an acronym without saying what the words are, and so I'm pretty good at stopping myself after the fact at least. I'll leave a dollar when I exit, but. But Caleb, the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee is made up of staff members from around the region of all of our member agencies, and they advise our Board of Directors. So pretty much everything that our Board of Directors does has gone through staff activity, and then it's been reviewed and recommended by our Regional Technical Advisory Committee as well. And so Meridian has two current members, and then there's a vacant position as well, but Caleb Hood and Brian McClure are both members of our Regional Transportation Advisory Committee as well. So with our, with that kind of role, that looking, that long-term role, the basic mission of Compass then is to conduct regional planning, facilitate coordination and cooperation among our member agencies. We serve as a source of a broad variety of information and expertise on issues affecting southwest Idaho. And then we assist member agencies in accessing our funding, or accessing funding so that, you know, you and other agencies and the region as a whole can accomplish the goals that you develop relating to transportation. So to do that, we conduct transportation planning, we distribute federal transportation dollars, we provide technical expertise, and then we facilitate that cooperative collaborative process that I was just talking about. So I want to talk for just a second about like what the challenges are that the region is facing, and then I'll talk about like how Compass and our agencies and our members are addressing that. So what this image on here shows are developments that have been approved and completed in the past five years. And it's a heat map, so it's not precise to a particular parcel, but we're trying to sort of show the overall picture there. So our region right now is at 850, basically 850,000 people. We'll be up over a million by 2050, and by 2055, 1.3 million. So it's a rapidly growing region. We're averaging about 15 new households a day and about 16 new jobs a day. So it's growing pretty rapidly. And what that leads to then, and so this map is showing the, in brown, it's showing the population density we have right now. And the blue is showing the higher-density job area. So we're not showing with this one the low-density like retail jobs and shopping areas and things like that, but this is like the higher concentrations of the ones that really generate the commute, you know, the workday commute. So this is what we look at for 2025, and this is 2055. And I will probably flip back and forth a couple times just so you can get a sense for how significantly that changes. But specific to Meridian, you know, the boundary or the separation between Kuna and Meridian is basically gone. The separation between Nampa and Meridian is basically gone, and separation between Starr and Meridian is basically gone. And you already, Eagle is already right there, but. So those impacts are going to be pretty significant. But what this map shows is that area of brown is where the traffic comes from, and it's driving into the areas of blue around the region. And that's why we have the traffic flow and challenges that we have as a region. One of the other interesting things that's happening as a region, but it's really relevant to Meridian, is the centers, it's sort of the geographic centers of jobs and people are shifting. They are currently in Meridian, and they're continuing to shift in Meridian. So they're right now, what this map shows in the red is the, is employment or jobs, and then purple are the, is the populations, is sort of, like I said, the geographic center of that. You can sort of see over time how that's continuing to shift westward. So the interesting thing about this is that gap in distance between the jobs and the population. If you just looked at that just purely mathematically, that adds up, that's about, you know, about roughly called a three-mile difference and about 300,000, 350,000 jobs, so that's a million miles of travel a day. And keep in mind, that's an average, but that's a million miles of additional vehicle miles traveled every day on our roads because of that, because of that difference. And so occasionally you'll hear me or folks from our team will talk about, you know, the jobs housing balance. I'm sure you're all familiar with that and the importance of that to a healthy community. But that's, that's another one of those reasons is that it really does affect transportation. And so that gap really explains the traffic and congestion. The growth trend that I was showing in the previous slide demonstrates the, you know, the reason why we have those increasing volumes on the roads as well. And then that gets applied on top of the transportation, or on top of the congestion that we're already encountering. And so that, I'll show an image that kind of visually demonstrates what that looks like over time, too. And then the movement over time talks about, really demonstrates why there's a changing patterns, like new roads sort of start to become problematic over time is partly because that shift is happening of like where people live over time. So to help address these things and to sort of pull everyone together and accomplish our mission, Compass provides a seat at the table where the decisions about the region's transport, the region's overall transportation future are being made. We're also your voice outside of the region, so we participate very actively in national organizations that engage on transportation-related issues and then specific to region-level type, types of issues as well. And so I'm active on the council, the Executive Directors Council for the National Association of Regional Councils, and a number of our staff members are active on committees or boards of the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations. So we're really active at the, at the national level as well. Frankly, this region punches above its weight, and that's kind of what attracted me to the region is it's really impressive to work in a place where we really do play that, that role at the national level. We provide that financial assistance I talked about for transportation projects all over the region. But, you know, if local agencies have needs, we're here to try to help meet those needs. And so we also do technical assistance, provide any type of planning support. We do a number of planning activities. Smaller ones, we kind of do on-demand. Mid-sized ones, we request information in advance so that we can sort of budget for them. And then larger ones, we, you know, we work through a budget development process. So we work those into our budget and figure out the best way and the time to be able to get those bigger, bigger types of planning activities undertaken. We conduct, like I've noted and presented some, a fair amount of demographics and analysis for the region. And then we do long-range planning and really problem-solving is really the reason why we do that, why we do that planning. And so that, those planning activities take a large, or a wide variety of forms. So we, we just recently adopted a regional safety action plan just earlier, earlier this calendar year. I think that was in February. We are, we're undertaking and soon to complete the high-capacity transit. It's called the Planet and Environmental Linkage Study, so it's a sort of a more in-depth than just a basic plan, planning activity, but it's intended to take the first steps so that we can potentially, we can line up and start potentially seeking funding sources to move towards implementation of some kind of high-capacity transit future for the region. We undertake a bunch of different connectivity studies, really looking at mobility needs both now and the short and mid and long-term timeframes. We're undertaking right now a resilience plan that's really looking at responses and ways to mitigate impacts from, you know, any kind of resilience issue, but you know, weather, weather-type issue or any kind of natural disaster impact, which can sometimes be temporary and operational in nature, but they can also sometimes be, you know, permanent, create actual damage that needs, you know, that needs repair and therefore needs like different traffic patterns and stuff while, while the region is responding to those. Those all roll up into the overall regional transportation plan that we have. It's called Communities in Motion. We update that, it used to be every four years, but because we've improved our air quality as a region, it's now every five years, and so we're in the process of updating that right now, and we'll be, we'll be adopting that, assuming everything stays on track. We'll be adopting that in 2027. Well, by the time we move to adopt that, we'll already be working on the next one because they take a long time to develop properly. So our current plan, the Communities in Motion 2050 Plan, really identifies four different regional goals. So improving safety, enhancing economic vitality, maintaining our quality of life, and improving the convenience or maintaining at least the convenience of travel throughout the region. So to accomplish those, we undertake a number of different types of activities. One of these that we, that we conduct for all of our member agencies is we look at larger-scale developments, and for the smaller communities, admittedly, we'll look at pretty much anything that they bring in and they ask us to. But we look at larger community, or larger developments to evaluate how those align with the region's transportation plan. There's no binding element to it. It's informational. But we've done about 140 of these, 120 of these for Meridian since 2018. So we do quite a few. Well, Meridian is growing pretty rapidly, and so it's not a surprise that there are a lot of these that are coming through. And so we, you know, we offer this as something to help, to help the city with its planning activities. Also, of course, the plan is really, really has a big focus on identifying the infrastructure improvements or the types of transportation projects that we need over the next 20 years or so. And those include maintenance and safety and all the things that you see listed here that we, that we try to go through. And then, of course, roadway expansion is one of the ones that people always think about. But we also do want to make sure that when a need comes up, we're looking at all the potential solutions and trying to find the best one that's possible for the region. And we work very closely with the, the facility owner whenever we do these kinds of activities and try to select projects. So with all of these funded improvements, let's talk just for a second about what that means for the transportation system of the region. So this is what we currently have right now. So basically, the wider or darker the line, the, the worse condition, the worse congestion that segment of roadway has during its worst period of time during the day. And I, there's a lot of worse than worse and caveats and stuff, but basically that's an indication of like how bad the traffic is on that, on that stretch of road that people are encountering. So this is what we have right now, 2025. Without the investments that we're putting into the transportation system for the region that are identified in our plan, this is what we would be seeing in 2055. So obviously, pretty significant. And so to address that, we've got a total of $11 billion of transportation projects that we can reasonably anticipate having funded over the next roughly 30, 25 to 30 years. And so those are identified in the plan, and therefore we can model what they look like when we do them. And it gets a little bit better, but it doesn't get conditions back to where we are right now. And because of that, we've got, and I can flip through these if folks would like, but I'll just do it one more time just to demonstrate. Pretty decent now. There are still areas of concern, and you can kind of see where those concentrations are, particularly like noting that, you know, the places where we've got a pretty decent gridded structure, but then we have fewer crossings of the river north and south. Those are places, obviously, where traffic concentrates, and so the volume goes up on those traffics or on those pieces of those roads. And then this is what we're currently able to say, this is probably what it's going to look like in 2055 as things stand right now unless we are able to bring in more resources for the region. And also that, what that sort of translates to are more, more issues. So right now, the travel time that we model, or close to now, 2023, when we, when we last adopted this or last completed the plan. The time to travel during the peak hour from Caldwell to downtown Boise, which is sort of this, the standard number that we're able to, to use and that most people can understand, is, was about 30 minutes. In 20, in 20 years, it'll be about 44 minutes. Without those improvements, it would be, and that's, sorry, that's 49% increase, almost a 50% increase with the improvements that we're making right now. And so there's still, there's still a lot of, a lot of need. And then you also show, this also shows the, what we call event days, which are the days when the traffic is particularly bad, and that number has been getting higher as well. So we've identified to try to address these, a whole slew of unfunded needs. So maintenance projects and new road projects and expansions, regional pathways, improving the transit system and that possibility of a high-capacity transit. And what those all add up to, including the projects that we have funded and unfunded, is $16.5 billion worth of projects. Like I said, we've got about $11 billion that we can anticipate, and so there's about $5.5 billion of unfunded project needs, transportation needs around the region just to, just to try to get us where we currently are, just to keep, keep us where we currently are. That works out to an average of $193 million a year of shortfall. So to address that, Compass is actively going to be engaging and continue. We've done it in the past, and we're doing it again, but we're going to be actively engaging with the legislature. Our board, just a couple weeks ago, adopted its 2026 state-level legislative priorities, and those really focus on increasing revenue, obviously, to be able to address that shortfall that we're talking about. Addressing the growth impacts, so trying to find ways for growth to pay for the growth-related impacts. And I know that's something that pretty much every city that I've talked with in the region has been, has been encountering challenges around that. And then one of the new ones that we added this year is this idea of linking housing to transportation infrastructure so that, you know, we can encourage the legislature, if it's possible, as part of their housing activities, to try to, to try to find ways to encourage housing to go where the transportation system can already accommodate the additional density and population and people that would be using that, that infrastructure. This session, we're probably not going to be looking at any kind of sweeping major changes, but starting the incremental process of trying to move us towards where, where our board wants to go. And then I'll also just note, partly because of the, our engagement with our national organizations, but also my own background, I've worked on, in Congress on the Hill on planning and transportation-related issues. And so that's, we're also going to be engaging with transportation policy at the federal level. And that's really important, actually, this year because the federal law is due to be updated this coming year. The current one expires in, in November of 2026. And so the new one, we're trying, actually, September of 2026. The last one was November of '21 when it went into effect, but it expires in September '26. So we're trying to get everything done this year, and I'll be participating very actively in conversations in DC about those as well. So with all these activities, we like to say that Compass makes things happen. So our plan, basically, the process for us starts when projects go into our long-range transportation plan, where we're identifying the needs, and then we work with the project sponsors, the local agencies who are impacted by this, and our, and our board and our technical advisory groups to identify the best projects that address those needs. Then we, then we go out and we seek funding, and we try to find the funding for those projects. The partner agencies build them. Compass doesn't build any projects. We don't own any infrastructure ourselves. But the partner agencies build those, and then at the end of the process, hopefully, the region and the residents who use that infrastructure then are able to sort of reap the benefits from those. The first step in that whole process is typically going through what we call the Resource Development Program. And so this slide shows that we, you know, this application process that I mentioned at the start of my presentation, where we meet with all the local agencies to, to develop and encourage applications for potential needs. Maybe something that you don't have, it's not ripe yet, but you still want to start talking about it. And so we try to get it into our queue so that we're preparing for it and trying to, trying to develop the resources for it. But some of those we're able to fund. We have two primary funding sources for these, and they're, and they're admittedly small, so they don't pay for big pieces of infrastructure. But, you know, if you need $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 for some kind of a sidewalk interchange or improvement or something like that, we've got a project selection process to go through for that, and we're able to fund a few of those every year. And then we also use this to identify the studies that we need to start doing the work on now before they, before they go live and before the projects are actually ready to seek the funding. We start that all with, you know, making sure that the need is there, the need will be there in the future, and identifying the path forward to try to, to try to move those projects into development implementation. Those that don't get funded then go into this Resource Development Plan that we maintain, which is essentially this long list of all the potential planning activities that the region has over the future. And it's a pretty long list right now, but, you know, we're standing by to try to get those moving. And every year, we try to take a few more off of that list and keep, keep the process moving forward. Once a project is on our unfunded list, then we're able to start providing it with all kinds of support services, like seeking a specific grant to help implement a specific need for a, you know, for a small project or even sometimes there are bigger projects that aren't yet planned, but they're, they're ready to start down that path. And so we, we can go through and do all sorts of support activities to try to help local agencies move those forward. And I'll just remind again to anyone who's listening or in the room that the application phase that we're in right now closes next Wednesday. But we do encourage folks, and if you don't get one in this cycle, or if you have more than one, and you're submitting a bunch, we also have another cycle, another window, application window that we'll have open in the spring, in the April, April timeframe. So some of the projects that, you know, this leads to, they, they have started through our Resource Development Program, but they lead to really big projects sometimes, like State Highway 16. First showed up in Compass's regional long-range plan back in 2006 and has gone through, you know, a process of consistent movement, a few hesitations while we were seeking funding sources and some things like that, but it's been moving. And that's basically, a project that size takes that long. It's really difficult to be able to, to move much faster than that, especially when there's competition for the funding resources. If funds have been available, maybe it would be four or five years ahead of where it is right now. But it's, it's moving and, you know, theoretically still, by the time it's done, it'll be able to immediately start making improvements on the transportation system. We also look at smaller projects and are able to move those forward, too. So one example from Meridian is the rail-to-trail pathway, just, I think, near the building here that started in 2016 and then was completed in 2025, or is obligated, I guess, in 2025 and underway. Right now, it's a smaller project, you know, the State Highway 16 is, you know, almost $200 million, I think. Those are big round numbers, so don't quote me on that one. And it's sort of a moving target as the state adds pieces and so on. But that project's a really big project. Some of these can be quite a bit smaller, but still, you know, hopefully have an impact and really match what the local agencies are seeking us to be able to provide. So as I, as I mentioned earlier, this is part of a process that we go through every year where we're meeting with the local agencies. So we met with your team back in September to talk about So we met with your team back in, in September to talk about, you know, your needs and challenges. And what we heard were difficulties with grant applications. It's a complex process. That's why we have someone on staff who's basically a full-time grant assistant person. He's a grant, I think it's called grant supervisor. And he helps any local agencies with collecting the data and the materials that they need to complete grants themselves, if that's the path they want to go. We occasionally write grants. There are some that want to do it on their own and, and then we just sort of coordinate support letters for them. And as we're increasing now our federal engagement through our government affairs activities, we'll be able to work the, sort of work the refs in DC a little bit to, to try to help that. I'll just say from experience, having worked in places where we do have a pretty solid DC presence, we can be much more successful in those grant processes when, when that's in place. And so hopefully we'll be able to help with that as well. We also heard about a need for safety improvements throughout the, throughout the city, more interest in collaboration on these regional pathway and safety, you know, these interchange or intersections of safety and pathway issues. And then more consistent communication between the agencies, which has been a really strong theme for us. And so I'm exploring different ways that, that Compass will be able to sort of play that convening role and try to reach out and engage more with our local agencies. So we can assist, you know, like I said, with those grant applications. We can always search for funds. We're always looking for funding sources for projects that we know are, are ready to go around the region. And we're, we're going to include in our safe pedestrian interchange prioritization or enhanced road safety study, which is a very long convoluted name. We've identified, we've abbreviated it, this happened before I was here, but we've abbreviated it as Spears, which isn't really an acronym for that, so I'm not sure how that came about, but, but that's what we're calling it. And, and we're looking at some of the, some of the Meridian specific issues as part of that plan. And then like I said, that facilitating that interagency communication whenever we can. So starting to wrap up, you know, overall, we think we're here to help. That's why, that's why we exist is to really help all the member agencies and, and, and try to sort of be the steward for the region, the region's transportation system. So we're planning for the future transportation system. We have a pretty strong focus on safety issues I, I mentioned a few times. We facilitate these, these regional discussions, but it sounds like from what we're hearing, we can probably continue to do better in that. And then, and then these activities try to fund projects around the region. We also collect, analyze, develop and, and use and help people understand all the different data relating to transportation and growth around the region. We connect local and regional planning. So we look at what the local agencies are doing and we've tried to fit that into the regional context. And so we can really have a, a good picture of that. We provide a bunch of different free educational resources. So one of the things that we're undertaking right now is called the Good Moves Safety Campaign. And so we have stickers and, and signage and, and promotional materials for that to try to encourage people to practice safe travel behavior, driving, walking, biking. And then every year we recognize achievements and sort of the excellence around the region relating to transportation. So the projects that have been, that are sort of model projects are really exemplars of really good transportation projects around the region, as well as the individuals around the region who have been really effective leaders in addressing transportation needs and, and priorities around the region. So this has been the short version of, of the Compass presentation. We've got the, the really detailed one that's coming up in late January. We do a couple of them to try to work around folks' schedules, but it's really intended for elected officials, obviously all of our board members. And we'll have a few new board members in, in, starting in the new year. And so we'll definitely work with them. One of the things that's kind of exciting about this is we're talking about adding some new elements, like maybe some simulation and activities instead of just standing there and, or sitting there while we stand there and have us walk through the long detailed versions that explain like step by step of how we review X, but, but having some things that are more like scenarios and, and how Compass and our board would evaluate those if they were in that role of board member. And so we're, we're playing around with some new ideas for how we can maybe make that a, a really interesting process. So with that, just want to thank you all for your time. I really appreciate the opportunity for me to come out and I do encourage any of you, my contact information's on the next slide and I think in, in your materials as well. But if any of you have any questions relating to transportation or what Compass is or what we do, or what we might be able to help with or, or provide information about, please feel free to reach out directly to me. Or if you have contacts with any of the staff members at the agency, please feel free to reach out to them too. So with that, thank you, and I'm happy to have any discussion. The last thing I'll do just is encourage you to press your team to get applications in by Wednesday of next week on this resource development program that we operate. Cause we, we really do like to make sure we have a, a real sense of the pulse of the region and what, you know, what agencies think they need.
Okay. Thank you, Director Rayburn. Very sobering preview into our future traffic patterns. Turning to my colleagues, does anyone have a question or a comment?
Madam Vice President.
Councilman Overton.
Comments? Craig, thank you, and a huge thank you to your staff. It's a longstanding relationship we've had with Compass and you put up a slide. You know, we do a lot of work here from the diocesan with ACHD and we get to see things at a county level. But when you put up the slides where everybody gets to see that regional level of what we're looking at, it has always been overwhelming to me at some point when we see the city of Meridian surrounded by every other city in that geographical area. We are the center of that dartboard. And I always make the comment that all traffic goes through Meridian. It doesn't matter what city you're coming from. Seems like 80, 90% of them in some point in some way are coming through our city. And I can't help but believe as we look at that map and the growing between communities, that our transportation needs are going to grow at a much higher rate than even our population increase. While we're going to see the city grow, our transportation needs are going to grow almost exponentially as we try to keep up with not our growth, but the growth of the surrounding communities that also come through our city at the same time. And I'm, I'm so glad to have a resource that comes up with regional solutions because we can no longer operate as a city just thinking about ourselves and what Meridian needs to do. The only way we're going to be able to do this in the future is with that regional approach. And there's no better example than using Highway 16, because that's benefiting multiple communities, not just Meridian. We're all going to benefit from it. It's going to be that type of innovation on how we solve transportation problems in the future that's going to keep us from being a total gridlock. And when you look at those 2050 and 2055 look forwards, they're, it can be a little scary, but it's always good to know that we've got such a group of people dedicated that are working towards that along with us, that takes a little of that heavy lifting off our shoulders. And I appreciate everything you do at Compass. Your staff's been fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Taylor?
Director Rayburn, thank you. That was a really interesting presentation. I have a question, sort of in the long range planning realm when it comes to the rail corridor. In order for that to come to fruition, we obviously have a long way to go. It's going to require significant resources from the federal, state, local level. Do you have any sense what kind of financial commitment a city like Meridian, for example, would need to make or be expected to make or even ballpark figure in order to have a project like that come to fruition? What are we talking about? Do you have any sense for that yet?
Madam Vice President, if I could...
Please.
Yep. So I, I don't know if we can say what any individual agency would have as far as a, as a need for that. There's a long timeframe, as you note, to make that happen. And I think in order for that to be successful, there are going to have to be new funding sources that are put in place so that the individual agencies end up focusing more on the stationary type improvements that will be happening in their, in their jurisdictions rather than the individual agencies contributing to the, like the capital cost of developing the project. I think that'll probably require a significant amount of external funding and new funding sources. But at this point, it's, it's really too soon. There's no financial plan around that yet. Not trying to dodge it or anything, it's just, it's, it's really early in the, really early in the thinking about, about what that is. I, I will tell you that we, when I was in Las Vegas, we worked on light rail planning and bus rapid transit planning. And the, the cost model for that didn't, wasn't going to take anything, wasn't going to require any contribution from the actual local governments. It was all going to be, the local need was all going to be met by a new local funding source.
Further questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have the enterprise fund update and rate structure discussion, and I will recognize Director Lorelei McPhee.
All right. Thanks, Council. So I have a kind of long presentation for you tonight. We'll try to make it light, as much as light as rates and graphs and public works can be, but we'll try. So I thought it was important before we talk about what our rates need to be, is to give you a picture of the health of the enterprise fund. So we're going to do kind of a health check on the enterprise fund, show you where we're at, show you how we've done. I did want to talk a little bit, remind you about our cost of service study that we completed. And then I'd like to talk about base versus use and how we structure our rates. Not necessarily looking for an official vote or action today, but am looking for your feedback on, do you buy into this new way to structure our rates? And if not, that's okay too, but I kind of need that feedback to know which type of rate increase to bring forward to you. So like I mentioned, we'll do a quick health check and I think that there's several components that make up the health of the enterprise fund. So looking at our current rates and how they compare, looking at our fund balance and how that's allocated, and then also looking at our rate model, which looks at our 10-year financial plan and models, both of our, both our expenses and our revenues coming in. So the great news when we look at our rates is I think we can be really proud of the fact that we are the lowest rates in the Treasure Valley by a lot. We are $35 less per month than the Treasure Valley average and well over $100 less than, than the, the highest rates. So I think we can be really proud of that. That's in large part due to us doing the save before you spend, not having any debt and being really conscientious about our financial planning. To be fair, we also were asked, you know, because a lot of those cities are small cities, is how do we compare against the 10 most populous cities in Idaho? And again, we're very near the lowest and this is across the whole state of Idaho, $14 per month below the, the rates across the top 10 cities in Idaho. The next thing is our fund balance. So this is our, kind of our money in the bank, where are we standing? And you might say that is a lot of money to have in the bank. However, if you look at how that's broken down, we have a large percent that is in, committed to existing projects. So what carry forward is, is projects that are already underway, but the funding just hasn't been spent all the way yet. You'll see a chunk there that's for new capital. Those were new projects that were approved for FY '26. And then you'll see our reserves. Those are fully funded. That's another spot that we're fortunate to be in. Not all cities have their reserves fully funded. So you'll see the actual amount in the enterprise fund bank that's not committed to something is much lower than when you, when you first look at it and say, you know, we have close to 100 million. So the last thing to look at, I think, is our rate model. So like I mentioned, this is a financial model that we put all of our revenues, our expenses, we put both capital expenses and operational expenses into here. And we apply some assumptions like account growth, inflation and potential future rate increases to show you what our fund is going to do over time. One thing that you'll see different this year is there's two lines. So we were successful working with the finance department in FY '25 to separate our funds. They still all reside in the enterprise fund, but we now have a separate wastewater fund and a separate water fund. And the intent is that both of those funds collect the revenue they need to support themselves and that we're not mixing funds within the enterprise fund. So it's kind of a best practice. So we were successful in doing that. This chart doesn't show our reserves, so that's, that's money that's not shown on here because we don't want to plan for spending those reserves in our operational and capital plans. This run that you see specifically here also doesn't include any future rate increases. So this is what things would look like if we never raised rates again. And so a couple of things that we do, while you'll see this is a 10-year model, we usually just focus on maintaining solvency for the first five years because we have some time to recover. There's a lot of assumptions that go into the tail end of that model that may or may not happen. And so, well, it can feel a little scary to see them dip like that. Really, we focus on can we get those lines above that zero line within the five years, which is where that line intersects there. So from this, the good news is the wastewater fund is pretty stable for the next five years. The water fund needs some adjustments, but we'll talk about how to do that. So overall, we feel like the enterprise fund is in a really great spot. We have the lowest rates in the valley. We have no debt. Our current projects are funded, our reserves are funded, but we do know that we're going to have to do some kind of rate increase going forward. The good news is they're not large significant rate increases. So a couple of things to remind you of, we did a cost of service study in 2024. This is the first one of these that the city undertook on the enterprise fund. And what this did is it brought in an external financial consultant who helped us, we had a couple of key objectives we wanted to get through this study is we wanted to make sure that we had a plan for revenue sufficiency and stability over our, our planning window. We wanted to make sure that the way we collect rates is legally defensible. And we wanted to make sure that we were working towards a methodology that covers the true cost of providing service. So the results from that found the enterprise fund is healthy, just like we, we noted, but we will likely need rate increases. They did find that our methods for establishing and setting rates are legally defensible and financially sound. And they also noted that the city's rate model is an accurate and predictive tool. So those were all good outcomes out of that. They did give us some recommendations. So in that, there were a few that we've completed already. So evaluating our assessment fees every three years, evaluating our rates every year, considering the fund split, which we accomplished this last year with finance. The next one is the one that we'll talk about today is considering changes to the base versus use. And then we have an additional goal that we'll look at is considering developing different customer classes in our billing structure today. We just have one. So when talking about setting utility rates, it's, there's some philosophy that goes into it. So I feel like we're all very aligned on the first three items here. We want to remain debt-free. We strive for small incremental rate increases rather than large significant jumps. And we want to make sure the rates are fair, defensible and stable. So I feel like we're all in very good alignment there. The two that I want to talk about is the two new ones on the bottom. So do we all agree that we want a rate structure that's designed to truly capture the cost of providing service? And do we want to make sure that customer types, so low, medium or high users are not subsidizing other customer types? So we don't have to answer that right this second, but think about those two things as we go through the next few slides. So when we talk about base versus use, you might be wondering why, why we're having this, this conversation. So it allows us to truly capture, if you have the costs in the right buckets, truly capture the true cost of providing service. We'll talk about how it shows and provides better equity for the customers and provides us more stable and predictable revenue. One of the concerns that we hear about the most when we talk about base versus use is that in theory, the customer could have less control over their bill, that more of it is set on the base. So it's, it's set, it's flat. And I'm going to show you a little bit of what that does too. So we, we already do base versus use. So this isn't a new thing. I'm just talking about the ratio at which we do them. So what you'll see on this graph is various cities throughout the valley, those same ones that were on the, the rate comparison. And you'll see the blue bars are the percent of their rate that they allocate towards a base cost. Those are their fixed cost and the percent of their costs that are allocated on the use. And so you'll see that Meridian is the lowest percentage of rates on their base and I'll show you how that's impacting us. So when we did the cost of service study, we went through each of, all of our costs and we classified them as should this be a base cost or should this be a use cost? And you'll see... And you'll see on the water side that today we place 29% of our costs on the base when our true base costs are closer to 73%. On the wastewater side, it's a little more balanced. You see, we place 23% of our costs on the base where our true cost to provide true cost of service is at 27%. So when you talk about base costs, you might be wondering, what are those? So those are the base fees for providing the services that we provide. They they tend not to fluctuate based on the amount or volume that customers are using. It's the cost of maintaining the system that we already have in place. So you'll see some examples of those of what base costs are. And under a true cost of service with equity, you would say those costs should be equally spread amongst all users. Those are it's the cost of doing business. It's not related to how much a customer uses. Use costs, on the other hand, are charges that we do see increase based upon how much utilization. So things like electricity, chemicals. So if a customer uses a lot of water, our costs could increase in those areas. So in theory, those costs should be more directly borne by that user. So a couple of other things that we've seen change is the our customer base is using less water per capita. Now, that doesn't mean that we're making less water. In fact, we're making more because we've grown, but our cost per household is decreasing. And this this graph here, we know that this line does not bottom out. There will be or that it will bottom, there will be a a point where that's our base level of use. The main reason you're seeing this decline is primarily due to new efficient water features or water fixtures and plumbing appliances that they are much more efficient than old ones. And so just by the fact that we're putting those things in new houses, we're seeing our per use go down over time. But that doesn't mean that our costs to maintain the existing system are going down. Those those remain consistent. The other concept I wanted to talk a little bit about is equity. So it's a little bit hard to show this, but we kind of made up this this fake example of something like reading meters is a base cost. So it let's say it takes us a dollar to read everybody's meter. And it doesn't matter if you use a ton of water or a little bit of water. It costs us a dollar to go out and read that meter. So in theory, if it was allocated correctly to the base, every user would pay a dollar. But the way our rate structure is now with much more of the percent on the use, small users are paying less and large users are paying more. So in our setup today, our larger users are subsidizing our smaller users. And so there's a couple of ways that we can start addressing this without making drastic changes because that's important to us. So you'll be familiar with generally, I come up here and I say, hey, we just need a 3% rate increase. And what I'm actually saying is we need a 3% increase. We're applying that to the base and the use just uniformly across water and wastewater. So historically, our last few rate increases have just been a 3% rate increase, and that's how we apply it. I'm going to talk about, and you'll hear me call it the nine four plan throughout this presentation. And I know upfront, when I say 9%, it sounds like a lot, but what you will see with this is that it actually results in a lower cost to the average customer by doing this this rate increase, and it essentially very slowly starts shifting more of the costs onto the base to give us that where we feel like we need to go with the cost of service study and the true cost of providing service. So I wanted to show you some model runs of what these rate increases do. And I'm going to show you some 10 year rate increase scenarios. I fully know that we can only approve the rate increase for this current now, but when talking about these, I think it's important to have a vision for here's what this is going to do long term over time. So knowing that all this, we will be back in front of you every year. So this first one you'll see is what if we did a 3% across the board just one time in FY26? And so you'll see the lighter line is where we're at currently. And the darker line is where we would go to. So what you'll see on this is that it moves the lines a little bit, right? We're in, we're having a slight impact. But it, because you need a bigger increase on water, you're not seeing it actually impacts the wastewater side greater, which is not where we need the as big of an impact. And it barely moves our water line, and we're still insolvent over the five year period. So what if we did the nine, four, three, one plan? And you'll say, well, it barely moved the line again. You will see, though, it moved the wastewater line less, and it moved the water line a little bit more. And again, this equates to about a 2.6% increase to the average customer. Where this matters, though, is if you apply this philosophy over the 10 years. So this is what it would look like if you did a 3% rate increase every year for 10 years. And what this shows you is that you are going to massively over collect on the wastewater side, which is not what we want to do. And you still haven't solved your water problem. But let me show you what it does if you do the nine, four, three, one over 10 years, is it collects just about the right amount in both funds over that time. I did want to show you, though, what that does to a couple of things. I want to show you what it does to our fund, and then I want to show you what it does to the customer. So this is if you did the nine, four, three, one plan over 10 years. So on the water side, remember, we're putting 29% of our cost on the base. Our cost of service study said we should put 73%. If you do the nine, four over 10 years, it will move you to 37%. So we're still not even putting all of our base costs on. But our goal is to be incremental, to be gradual, and to collect as much as we need without dramatic shifts to the customer. So it moves us there. But the the reason I show this slide is that there still is more we could move, but as you'll note on the last graph, we don't necessarily need to. So on the wastewater side, you'll see it moves us from 23% to 26%, which is just about in alignment with what the cost of service study recommended over the 10 year period. And so you might ask, what does this do to the customer? So if we just did this in FY26, we already talked about it's about a 2.6% increase. It is an increase of about $1.66 for most of our customers. It still puts us at the lowest rates in the valley. So that's a good place to be. I did want to show you, though, what if we do the nine, four, three, one plan for 10 years? Where does that put you? And this is so caveat with this graph, this shows no other rate increases, or this is if all of these other cities did not a single other rate increase for 10 years, which we know is not a real assumption. But what this shows you is that after 10 years of the nine, four, three, one plan, the average customer's bill would be right about at $85 a month, which is still below the average of today. And what that means is that your rates in 10 years are still affordable even compared to today. So really good position to be in. Over that time, it the no annual impact is greater than 3.4%. So we're looking at rate increases of below 3.5% across that 10 years. Or I should say cumulative rate increase. We did have some questions about what does it do to our our customers, right? We talk a lot about the average customer, and the reason is that in Meridian, that's the that's the majority of households is is in that average. So we thought, let's take a look at what it does to a low user. So this is maybe a a single person living in a smaller home. Our average user, what we're calling a high user. So this is maybe a family that also waters with city irrigation. And then we have a few what we call large users. So maybe like a car wash. And you'll see what their current rates are. So that's what they pay each month. And you'll see what the impact would be just with the flat 3%. So our standard where it's 3% to the base, to the use, to water, to sewer. And then you'll see what the nine, four, three, one plan does. And you know, there is a larger impact to your smaller user, but I think what's important to understand is that the difference between those is, I think, 16 cents per month. So we are doing very gradual, small movements to try to correct that that imbalance on the rates. The I wanted to talk a little bit about the customer's ability to control the bill. So today, our average user, if they were to reduce their water usage by 20% in their household, which is actually pretty significant, that's essentially not using water in your house for more than one full day every week. So when you talk about a 20% decrease, that's that's very large. And so if a customer was able to reduce their water usage by 20%, today, they could reduce their bill by about 12.7%. If we did the nine, four, three, one, it shifts to about 12.6% that. And again, that's reducing water usage by by a pretty significant amount. But the reason the customer still has a large control over their bill is that a lot of our our use or a lot of our rate is still put on the use under this this structure. So again, as we talk about, you know, are we in alignment? We all agree, zero debt, strive for low sustainable rates, small incremental increases. And the real question today is, do we want to start moving towards the objective of trying to capture true cost of service by putting more of the rate on the base? And do we want to try to move towards reducing some of the user subsidy? And if we do want to do that, it looks like something like the nine, four, three, one plan where we're increasing the base more than we're increasing the use. So we have a couple of options, right? That obviously, we would recommend the nine, four, three, one plan. It does get you solvency and wastewater. We will need to do some more increases to get us solvent in water. We could also just do a straight 3% across the board if that's what we're comfortable with. Again, we wouldn't recommend doing that for the all 10 years because it doesn't get you where you need to be, but we could certainly do that this year. And then the third option is if you wanted to do one rate increase today and not have to do any rate increases for the next several years, it would look like a 9% to both the base and use in water and a 1% to wastewater, which would get you five year solvency on both of those funds. That one obviously has the biggest impact to the customer today. If you're good with whatever proposal we want to move forward with is we would do our typical process of publishing it on the utility bills and would look to do a public hearing in mid-December and would be looking to make this rate increase effective on January 1st. So with that, any questions? We can go back to slides. Happy to discuss.
Thank you so much, Director McFay. That was very fascinating. I saw some people furiously writing notes, so I'm sure we will have lots of questions. Maybe one to start with is, do you have the projection model modeled for the 9% 9% scenario? Because I would just be curious to sort of compare that.
For the the last one on there, that one. So I did throw that is that one. And that's a one time 9%, 1% gets you there.
Thank you. That's helpful. And yeah, I would just keep all your slides handy. I think I think we're definitely going to have questions. It might take people a bit to digest this. This is a lot of meaty information. Folks, anyone, does anyone have a question? Either here or online. Councilman Overton.
Not as much as a question as a kind of an obvious statement. I think it's kind of our duty to look at what the best long range solution is. Don't want to pass a solution that's only going to be good for a couple of years, or we're back here having the same conversation again. It obviously looks like you've done your homework on the nine, four, three, one. That gives us the highest degree of solvency and answers a lot of the questions on are we getting increase where we need it to remain solvent for the longest period of time. It didn't take very long for me. It's a math issue. And I look at the math and that makes total sense to me. Support the move to the nine, four, three, one.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Overton. That was good feedback. Councilwoman Taylor, and then we'll go to Mayor Simison.
Thank you. Laurel, I appreciate it in your typical Laurel life fashion. You walked us through very methodically, and it made a lot of sense as we kind of moved from one thing to the next. Obviously, I've had a chance to look at these slides before, so I peppered Lorelei with lots of questions previously, so I don't have too many questions, but that would be helpful to point out a couple of things. One, the ability where we currently have a lot on the use. I think you kind of made the point, but maybe you could speak to it a little bit more, regardless of how much a customer may try to control what their usage is so they can kind of control what their bill is. We're really talking an insignificant amount of potential ability to control what that is. Could you maybe speak to that a little bit in terms of like, you know, the concept of can you actually control how much we're going to be paying by how much you use and what the reality of that is?
Yeah. So great question. So because our rates are so low, our use component per thousand gallons on the water side is just a little over $2. So you know, every if an average user home uses 6,000 gallons a month, the ability to change that bill at least on the water side is, you know, within that $2 range based on your use. And and when we make this move to the nine, four, three, one, those numbers don't change significantly. So you're still in that. I think it goes back to this slide. Under the nine, four, three, one, you know, your base fee today is about $15.30. Your base fee under the new plan is $16.11. So you're really making really small changes in in so the customer still has the ability to change. And if you do the the nine, four, three, one over the 10 years, you still see that the customer on the water side still has 63% of their bill is within the use category or within their control. Wastewater side, 74% is in under their control. So really, it's a huge percentage is still under the use and still able for them to control their their costs.
Call up Madam Vice President.
Please.
Can you go back to that slide where it talks about where you have the multiple one more? Yeah, right.
That one.
Yeah. This is kind of an interesting one to me because it shows a variety of different users. What stands out to me is if I'm paying my bill, I probably don't even notice the difference, right? If we make these changes to the nine, four, three, one, I may, I might have been told about the changes, but when I go to pay my bill in six months, I probably don't even notice it. So while what we're looking at when we're thinking of our the citizens of Meridian, making some, we're evolving towards something that's a little bit more fair, a little bit more predictable, gives us long term solvency. But they don't really notice a significant difference in terms of what that impact is going to be, right? With more of an internal function of how we're we're billing that. So I like that. To me, that was really important when we were looking at this is you know, our customers, our citizens of the city, going to feel this impact, feel this change? The answer is not really unless they're comparing bill to bill and say, oh, you charged me 26 cents more or less. We're not going to notice that while making some changes. So I think it's, I like the direction that this is headed.
Thank you. Mayor Simison.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I I, Lorelei and I have talked about this as well. Unfortunately, I have a little PTSD from this conversation as someone who invested heavily in solar on their home. And then this conversation is almost identical to what Idaho Power did with their PUC conversation. And so on one hand, I appreciate the dialogue. On the other hand, I'm always I'm wary of the true outcome, especially for residents who who may have made an investment in their home under certain types of use opportunities to keep their rates slower. I I could never handicap what those would be, how many, if any, took those steps. Yeah, I think that most people that maybe have taken steps has been to so they don't use city water for their landscaping as an example through this process. But if if they've made a significant investment to reduce one and then feel like they're not being rewarded for those efforts. I know we were talking about averages through this process, but I just want to be cognizant that in this dialogue, we need to be aware of what people have decided to do based upon the approach that we have had through this. And I know the large commercial users have also been impacted even by the you know, the decision not to do reclaimed water recently. So are we compounding the the conversation for people who are making So are we compounding the, the conversation for people who are making investments as we go through change? Maybe, maybe not. But I, I can only tell you that I was told basically everything Idaho Power does is now in their base rates. And that's where all your money is. I don't, I'm not saying that's what is being presented by the city in this case. But as a user, it just, I, I, I fear what it will be, but maybe the data proves it won't be anything. But PTSD for this guy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, as a solar user myself, I'm very familiar. I, I, I had kind of a question and it was more around in our modeling or in kind of just predicting incentives and human behavior. Do we think that this kind of change, if it's replicated over time, ends up resulting in higher water use? Because people just feel like, well, I'm paying it all in my base fees for basically the fixed costs of the city of Meridian. I, I just think that that's another kind of impact. We need to be cognizant of. I don't know how we could predict that, but I thought it was worth asking.
No, that's a good question. And you know, I think that would take us, if, if we're concerned with usage and, and consumption, I think it takes us towards like a tiered rate structure that's based on, you know, as you increase in volume, maybe there's additional rates that are different. I think they've found that that's, that's more effective in changing. I think because the amounts are so small that we're talking about, they don't impact large shifts. And I think to the, to the mayor's question on, you know, what investments have people put in that, that would, you know, I think the, the biggest one that he pointed out is if you were able to get onto surface water instead of city water. But I think you would still see, see those savings because you're, you're drastically dropping your, your usage. And that your base is, is still remaining relatively at, on this slide, you know, going from 1530 to 1611. So your base is not increasing significantly.
And Laurel Ly, just to jump in, so, and, and if I understand kind of what's happening is that the average usage of residents is decreasing and effectively it's being diluted by new construction practices and more efficient appliances. And so I guess my question to you would be, I, I, I'm kind of with Councilman Overton in the sense that, and, and also Councilman Taylor's comments so far. I mean, it feels like a gradual change. It feels like it's manageable for people. It feels like if we replicated this over the long run, this would be the right way to do something like this. Could we, if we did this, could we measure like average use per household and see like, is this creating a change in behavior? Is this changing the incentives for people and kind of? Was just curious, what kind of follow-up, if we implemented, for example, the nine, four, three, one plan, like what kind of follow-up would we expect as we kind of measure the impact of moving to this other model?
So we measured the, where this, that graph came from is actually our water master plan. So every five years when we do our water master plan, we, we continue the, the lines on this chart. And it's certainly something that we keep track of over time to see if this, this would make a significant change.
Yeah, that's really helpful. And I guess would it, do you have the data in a granular enough way that you can kind of show it for different segments? Like this is kind of what your average retail user is, your medium user, your small user, your high-capacity user?
So we do break down water use today into, I think, so I think three customer classes. So it's our general. We do a irrigation only and we do commercial. So we do have those three customer classes. And so we break our meter reads into those. So I think we could get it to that level of, of detail.
Thank you. Other questions, compliments, comments, feedback?
Madam Vice President.
Whitlock, please continue.
I'll start with a compliment. Thank you. This was very understandable and straightforward. So I appreciate you bringing it to my level. I'm still trying to sort things and connect dots. About a year ago, weren't we standing here talking about a rate reduction because of an EPA?
Yep.
Fee that was basically a pass-through. So
I did make a, an extra que, you guys are good. You're asking the extra question slides, which you don't even know were there. So we did do, we asked for a 3% rate increase, but we also had the sun setting of the EPA fee. And so that did actually result in a net decrease to the customer's bill last year. But we did, it was, it was kind of twofold because it was a rate increase, but that, that flat fee fell off. And it was good that flat fee did really important things for the fund and is part of that, the stability that the wastewater fund still has. But again, that was a, that was a flat fee.
Vice President, follow-up.
Please go ahead.
So really no net difference if, if it was a 3% increase and then a flat fee falling off, the customer really didn't see much on their bill?
They did actually see a de, it was a decrease of, oh, no, I don't.
I'm, Madam Vice President, I'm just trying to get to kind of a percentage to Councilman Taylor's point. You know, if a 3% increase or a 2% decrease is pennies on the bill, are they, are they noticing that? My email box did not overflow with appreciation for a rate decrease or 2% savings on their, their water bill.
And you know, I think it goes, it goes back to our, where, where are our rates compared to others in the valley? You know, and I think that's maybe something we could do a better job at is, is kind of celebrating that, right? That we have significantly lower rates than other agencies in the valley. And you know, a neighboring, larger city just did a 34% rate increase to their water and sewer rates this year. Like we, I feel really fortunate that we're in the situation that we're in, that we've done the planning and that we were able to make these small decisions rather than these really large impacts. So it's, I think testament to the planning that, that we've done, that the people before us did.
Absolutely.
Madam Vice Chair.
Councilwoman Lita Roberts.
Well, I thank you so much. You always do such a fabulous job and put your high-tech knowledge down to what we can understand. And I think just thinking about our citizens as our customers, sustainability, especially when it's so little impact that they're not filling our inboxes with either yays or nays, I think is just huge to maintain. And, and I like that we're the lowest, but I'm not sure that I care that we're really the lowest as long as we're creating that sustainability, which you and your team and the team before you have been so great with. I think that is just so critical because it's so hard to fix when you get to the point that you're not there and to just maintain it with such minimal cost to the citizens, I think is the most important thing we could do. So I would definitely support the nine, four, three, one.
Okay.
Madam Vice President.
Councilman Taylor.
So kind of a comment, thinking a little bit about what the mayor mentioned, what you'd mentioned about almost, are we creating a perverse incentive to? If people think, well, I, you know, Meridian is great. You can use as much water as you want and it doesn't matter. I think if you changed everything overnight, maybe you would see that. But can you go to the slide with the pie charts with the changes? I think this was kind of helpful to me.
That one.
Yeah. So even after 10 years of this plan, we still have, the majority of that is on the use, right? So it's so incremental, it's very different. So I'm not too, I don't think we run the risk of, you know, creating a perverse incentive where we are incentivizing accidentally increased use. And there's nothing we can do about Idaho Power and they're misleading the mayor and others on the solar stuff. So sorry about that. But I think given that we still have a lot is on the use and how we're billing that. I think these changes are, you're pretty responsible and reasonable. I think that's the way government should work is just slowly over time in a way that's continued to drive for efficiency. And like Councilman Whitlock said, I, I think if, we never get the thanks anyway. So even if it was a 10%, you probably wouldn't get overflowing your email inbox. But yeah, I, I like the direction where we're going here.
Okay. I think you, everyone, I feel like this has been good feedback. Maybe just Laurel Ly, do you, would you like a show of hands if this is heading in the right direction? And we'd like to see more about the?
I, I feel like I, I have a good
Got it?
Forward. And so we'll likely bring that. You'll see the next communication would be on the utility bill. And we messaged it in a way that essentially demonstrated what the average increase would be. Because it's a little bit hard to say that it's, is it a 9% increase? Is it 1% increase? And in aggregate, it's a 2.6%. So I think that's an important thing as we communicate about it over the next little bit. But we'll bring that forward through the public hearing and let you know if we hear any thing and have another opportunity to discuss.
Perfect. And we still have opportunities for, there's one, our council vice president's not here, but he has the ability, I think, to also, you know, ask, and we all do, to ask additional questions and provide feedback. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilman Overton.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, so you can by by saying aye. And we are